I'd like to call the order of the meeting of Village Board for June 18th, 2024. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President D. Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's six.
This time we're going to move to the public hearing presentation portion, and I believe we have a presentation from the Illinois Tollway.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Manar Naship. I'm the Chief Engineering Officer of the Illinois Tollway. With me tonight is Pete Sukas. He's with V3. And we're going to be giving an update on the tollways I-490 project through which we're constructing Western Access to O'Hare. And so there's a lot of work that we're doing this year, a lot of it's going to happen in the village. We're very excited about where we're headed with this project, and we're happy to be able to give you an update today. Okay, so I'll start with just a quick overview of the project. The Elgin-O'Hare Western Access Project is a mega project. The tollway's investing over $5 billion to deliver this project.
I'm sorry, Bethany. And Bensonville is located in the heart of the improvements along the southwest side of O'Hare. So here's, on this map, here's O'Hare, and then you all know where the village is, obviously, right there. So, the project includes construction of two new tollways, the Illinois 390 Tollway, which is complete and shown in orange, and then the future I-490 Tollway, which will connect with I-294 on the southern end, and then extend north, and then along the west side of the airport to connect with I-90 at the far northern terminus. The project does have, there are major benefits being delivered through this project. So we're not only building the two new toll roads, which amount to 17 new miles, 15 new and improved interchanges, 31 miles of arterial roadway improvements. So this project has a significant reach. It's not, we're not just building tollways, we're building, you know, reaching into communities with this project. But in terms of benefits, congestion relief, we're not only reducing travel time, but also pulling traffic off the local roads. So a lot of the long-distance trips through this area are made on the local routes. We're going to be pulling those trips off of the local routes and onto the tollways through this project. Western Access to O'Hare, and then jobs, the economic development that's occurring in anticipation of this project is visible already, and it's only going to grow. So it has been talked about for decades, and we are making it a reality as part of this project, Western Access to O'Hare. And so this is a rendering of the Western Access Interchange that will connect the two tollways on the west side of O'Hare. O'Hare is located off to the right on this slide. This is the 390 Tollway. This is all within the village of Bensonville. This portion west of York Road is complete. We're going to be beginning construction on the portions to the east of that location, which are, which is going to consist of six bridges that will carry over York Road and then extend onto the city of Chicago right away. So those six bridges are what we're going to be starting the work on this year, and that's really going to provide, you know, the initial Western Access to O'Hare through that improvement. And so, if I move to the next slide. So as I said, you know, there's a lot of work that has been completed already. Illinois Route 390 is open. Work west of York Road in this location is open, and these are some pictures showing the completed work. At the top left is the Western Access Interchange Work West of York Road that's been completed. This is a view looking east towards the airport. The airport is up here at the top. And then these are portions of roadway that are not yet open to traffic, but will be once we extend further east. This is South Thorndale Avenue off to the right, looking east, and then that continues to York Road at its eastern end. As you can see through our construction, and you've no doubt seen it when you've been out along this area, but we've been able to incorporate some aesthetic improvements to make it not just look like a standard, you know, highway bridge or highway roadway, but been able to work in some aesthetic treatments. You can see this I-490 logo with a nice plain, you know, pattern on the end of a bridge pier. And then we were able to, to get the village name lettered, lettering put on this bridge. So this is one of the bridges that will provide Western Access to O'Hare from South Thorndale Avenue. And then down here, this is a current view of the work. This is York Road here, looking north, and as you can see, a lot of the work here west of York Road has been completed. So with just the last, you know, last few slides here, I'll just give an update on the construction that's going to be occurring this year and into next. And that's going to occur through a few different projects. York Road is the first. This is a project that the tollway is partnering with DuPage County on, and it's for reconstruction of York Road from just north of Irving Park Road, which is off the bottom of this slide, to Devon Avenue up to the north. So through Bensonville and then extending into Elk Row Village by Devon Avenue. So we have divided this work into three segments. This year we're going to be working on the portion north of Supreme, north of, north of Supreme Drive, north of the village. So that's what's shown here in yellow. So that's the 2024 work. And again, it's for reconstruction of York Road. And then in 2025, we're going to be working down here in Bensonville between Gateway and Foster. And then in '26, once the Western Access bridge work is further along, then we will complete the work in the blue section. So big improvement to this area. During construction, we will be reducing traffic to one lane in each direction, but there will be turn lanes and access to adjacent properties will be maintained. And then we are hosting, to make sure we are getting the word out, we are hosting, or the village is actually helping us host, a property owner meeting, open house meeting, and that's going to be next Wednesday. So I appreciate the village's willingness to help us spread the word about this project. But as I mentioned, driveway access will be maintained. We're not going to be closing the road. We're going to allow for access to and from businesses at all times. And then as part of, part of the last phase of work, we are going to be building a shared use path as part of the project as well. So it's not only about the roadway improvements, but we're going to be accommodating pedestrians and make sure this is a friendly pedestrian corridor up and down York Road. The next project that's going to kick off really late this year is the Franklin Avenue-Green Street Widening and Reconstruction. So for this project, we are partnering with Cook County Department of Transportation Highways. And that project, the project limits are going to begin just east of, of here. And the project's going to include construction of new turn lanes and also will include a shared use path. So again, pedestrian accommodations will be, will be made through this project. And then similar to the York Road project, we, this project will also include aesthetic treatments. So we're going to be building, or installing roadway lighting along the new shared use path. New, and then new pedestrian lighting will be constructed as part of that or installed as part of that. And then on that lighting, instead of the standard color, silver color that you see with most roadway lights, those will be painted black, and that'll give, enhance the corridor look along Green Street. So really looking to, you know, kind of beautify this corridor. It is the gateway. We understand it is the gateway into the, into the village. And so these are some renderings, just as far as what it will look like when complete. And this is further east where the railroad bridge currently crosses over Franklin Avenue. So you can see there's a side sidewalk along the south side. This is, again, looking east. These bridges over top. And then this is a view looking west, back towards the village as you enter the village. And you can see the traffic signals and lighting painted black there. So you will start to see construction activity on Green Street here late, really late this year on this project. And then we are happy to report, and this is, you know, and really, I would say, you know, with the Western Access Interchange and this interchange are probably the most highly anticipated interchanges that we're doing, really not only as part of this project, but really everything we're doing in our capital plan. So this is the I-490 at Franklin Avenue-Green Street Interchange. So we're going to be building new access to connect I-294, which is very difficult to get to right now from this area, to, right into Franklin Avenue and Green Street. So direct access. And we've already seen, you know, I think just with the prospects of this coming, there's been a lot of economic development that has occurred. We get calls all the time about this interchange and the access, and, you know, how it's going to be configured and the timing and all of that. So we know businesses want to locate through, through here, you know, not only because it's close of O'Hare, to O'Hare, but really because the new access that's going to be provided, so they can move, you know, freight and their goods and, goods efficiently. So this work, we're going to start this here early fall, and then, you know, you'll see a lot of construction ramp up. So a lot of work happening in the village this year. We are, you know, excited to, excited to deliver these projects. We really are. And then this is just, just a photo. This is looking north. 294 is off the bottom of this slide. And these are, this is current construction, and these are where the ramps will tie in. Here's where the 490 at Franklin Avenue Interchange, it's going to be built right through this corridor. Railroad tracks on the left here. And then we'll continue from this point into Franklin Avenue and provide that new access to the area. So, you know, just wrap up there. Happy to take any questions. But again, on behalf of the tollway, we do want to thank the village, village staff, village board, and for your continued partnership. It's been a long road on this, this project. You know, and we are happy to be moving it forward, especially Western Access. Again, it's been talked about for decades, and, you know, we're, we're really excited to be right in the middle of it, delivering it and seeing, seeing it become a reality.
Thanks, Manar. I'll jump in, and on Friday, the mayor and I went on a tour with a bunch of tollway stakeholders, got to view these products in person, and the scale of some of it is just unbelievable. So congratulations to you and your team on that. And I do want to say the partnership is real. You know, we work with the tollway on a daily basis. A lot of, there's investments that the tollways made in Bensonville that you can't see. For example, on Green Street, the undergrounding of comm. ed, of overhead utilities will improve the sightline for that corridor as you come into Bensonville. And that sounds simple, but that's tens of millions of dollars that the tollway put forward to get that done for us to help beautify that corridor. So I want to thank you. How much time will the, will 490 save in trying to, for Bensonville resident trying to get to 294? Is there, do you have an estimate? I know that's.
Well, we know it's at least a 25% travel time reduction.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that that's important for a lot of reasons. We know that truck traffic going up York Road is a problem, and why is, why are trucks going up York Road? Because it's the quickest way to get north through town. We think that once the tollways build, that, that option, opportunity will be there that should reduce the truck traffic on local roads. So that's something we can all look forward to, and something I know that chief has been working hard to combat on his end. Does board have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Manar.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next, it's going to, supposed to be a proclamation recognizing Chief Daniel, Dan Schultz's years of service and retirement. We're going to deviate from that. Having some conversation with Dan over the weekend, Dan has decided to stay on board for a while longer. So we are going to take that as him staying and him continuing to be the chief of the Bensonville Police Department for the, for, for a while longer. And Dan, any, anything else that we can talk about on this?
Well, all I can say is it's been an honor, a privilege, and a pleasure to serve the village of Bensonville. And if they need me a little bit longer, I'm happy to stay.
No fishing for Dan. With that being said, we will move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. We do not have public comment. This will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 21st, 2024 Special Village Board Meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $4,4,959.59. Is there a motion to approve?
Do you have a motion?
There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and warrants approved. There are no items on the consent agenda under community and economic development. One is an ordinance granting a variation fence in the corner side yard, side yard at 621 Grove Avenue. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion? Curtis?
Yeah, so this is the corner at Church and Grove. So Church is the second side yard here requiring the variance. So the fence runs along Church Road. Towards the north of this property, there's actually a right-of-way that he won't be able to build into. So it's about 10 foot off the, kind of the, the north end of his property line there. It's an old alley right-of-way, but there's an easement there for, I think, utilities. No sidewalk along that section of church on his side. There's no real sight distance issues or anything. Community Development Commission voted for or recommend approval.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance granting a variation fence in the corner side yard at 807 Dennis Drive. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so another fence in the corner side yard. This one's a little goofy as you, as you look at the lot. It's sort of triangular at the corner there. So they're actually proposing it's a four-foot, sort of aluminum fence you can kind of see through. We approved a similar fence last year in a corner side yard. We kind of call them the Chicago-style fence where, you know, it, so it doesn't really block any sort of, you know, there's no, it's not a privacy fence, basically. It's not blocking any views or anything. And it's, it's just with the unique kind of layout of the lot, this makes a lot more sense going in there. So if you can see that little walking path on the, sort of, yeah, right around there, it's going to be basically north of that and then fencing off that whole section of yard leading to the backyard. The backyard's basically built up. I believe there might be a pool back there and then the patio. There's not much room for anything else. So they're looking for a little extra space to, you know, dog, kids, whatever, out into the yard. CDC did recommend a voting approval, recommend approval. I voted 4-0.
Any questions from our board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Three is an ordinance granting an amendment to a planned unit development with code departures for an athletic dome at 1005 Commerce Court. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
So directly across from the Bo Jackson Elite Sports Complex, this is what we're affectionately calling Dome 2 right now. The current planned user is a volleyball facility, so hard courts, basically using the facility and hosting tournaments. So it's a 84,000 square foot sports dome, really similar to the, to the Bo Jackson Sports Dome. You know, so this is an amendment to that PUD. So it's a, you know, there's an existing PUD with the sports complex that they amended to, to, you know, to, to do this dome. A couple code departures, maximum driveway width, parking lot perimeter landscaping, landscape islands, all kind of similar to what Bo did on that project over there. So real, very similar project in, in all senses. The, the main concern that we, that we've been discussing with both the team and then it came up at CDC was parking. We do anticipate, because this is hosting potential tournaments, that'll be a lot more need for parking. Luckily, the hotel owner has been interested in working with this group on shared parking, particularly of that second lot that we allowed them to build last year. So they're going to work out a shared parking agreement with the, with the hotel group. So the CDC did recommend approval for zero.
Any questions from our board?
I think it's just important to note that this is surprisingly close to what the original redevelopment plan was for this site. So it's great to see the developer try to stick with that plan and keep the two domes, which were initially contemplated together.
They have a timeline for the dome, like when they're opening?
I mean, so they're raring to go. We, we actually gave them a preliminary permit to start leveling the site and get it kind of ready. They have an engineering review in for permit right now. Essentially, they want to start pounding pylons as soon as they can. And then they, I believe they've already ordered the dome, so that we should be delivered sometime fall.
Okay.
Material's due to be delivered in November, and so the, the goal is to get that up as quick as possible.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Four is an ordinance for zoning map amendment for 1100 North Route 83 for I-2, General Industrial District to C-2 Commercial District. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, is there discussion?
So this is actually cleaning up a mistake we missed when we did our big zoning map rewrite there a few years ago. This is the property with the Dunkin'. It used to be the former Bachi Pizza there across from the Pilot. This should always have been a commercial property. It got rezoned industrial. It's a small property. I, we just overlooked it when we were doing the, the, the full zoning rewrite up there. So when Bachi went out, we had another business come in interested in going and just backfilling the space. We realized it was industrial. It should have been commercial. We're just making that correction on the, on the zoning map. CDC did recommend approval for all.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Five is an ordinance granting a special use permit, motor vehicle repair and/or service at 500 Eastern Avenue. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so special use permit for Mario's Trucking, existing facility there. We're basically just getting them into compliance with code. They only work on their own fleet, so they're not going to be working on outside vehicles. The property is pretty well kept. Essentially, the trucks are kind of kept at that kind of southeastern portion there, but they, they pull up in the front. There's a, there's some space in there. They'll have to install a triple catch basin to become building code compliant, but they agreed to do so. But in general, we're, you know, we were in favor with bringing them up to code essentially. CDC did vote to approve 4-0.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion passed. The ordinance is approved. Six is an ordinance establishing the Sesame Street Special Service Area. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
So Sesame Street, and we brought this to you a little over a month ago, I believe. So, you know, the, the street's run its useful life, needs to be basically reconstructed, and then we're going to add some additional amenities that we do to, you know, kind of bring it up to current street standards in the village. We passed the, kind of the, the initial ordinance to consider the Sesame Street SSA. We went through kind of that kind of public process. We received no objections, so nothing was filed objecting to the SSA. This is the ordinance establishing the SSA. You know, the project, we expect it to be, and Joe can talk about a little bit of this later too, but it, it does expect it coming around the same cost that we are estimating, about 2.8 million. We are putting about 1.2 in rebuild, rebuild Illinois grant funding into it, so we're covering a good chunk of this. The remaining of that will be bonded out, and that's what the SSA is going to be paying back over a 20-year period. So the property owners along the street will pay a, a small tax on top of their property taxes to repay that bond.
Any questions from our board?
With the approval of this, I'm going to put together our bond team to get a bond timeline together to go out to market and issue the necessary bonds associated with this SSA.
Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Seven is a resolution accepting a letter of intent for 112 North Center. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
So April 24th, we, Village Board approved a resolution declaring 112 North Center a surplus. We publicized it, looking for, you know, proposals. We received one, the proposal for Manco Builders. It matches the appraised amount of 48,000. So it's a letter of intent only at this point. We are asking the village to accept the letter of intent, subject to a purchase sale agreement and design review, which should be coming shortly. We anticipate that bringing back to the board next month for full approval.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved.
Your Honor, if I could jump in. If you did have items on this CED agenda, and it's been approved, you can now leave. You're more than welcome to stay if you want to stay, of course, but don't need to sit through the rest of the meeting.
Under Public Works, is a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order with Morton Salt Incorporated for the purchase of 650 tons of bulk rock salt and a not exceeding amount of $48,035. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Good evening. As it's customary, I try to pick one of the hottest days of the year to talk about my winter operations. So today I have in front of you, again, our purchase of rock bulk, bulk rock salt for the village for next winter. Typically, we go out and we secure salt from two different sources. DuPage County does a joint bid as well as the state of Illinois. So we try to capitalize on those two programs, buy about half of it from one and half from the other, so that we hopefully have two different suppliers in this situation where we have a really heavy winter and everybody's looking for salt. I have two places to go instead of just one. So this year, we're looking to purchase 500 tons of salt from each of those two entities. The county's one is done in the spring, the, the state one is done in the fall. So before tonight is the county agreement. They went out to bid. Morton Salt was their low bidder, came in at $73.90 per ton. They do an 80%, 130% program, which means we are obligated to buy 80% of the 500 tons, which would be 400 tons. And we have available to us in a bad winter, 130%, which would be 650 tons. We typically come to the board, ask for the full maximum amount, so we don't have to come back to you if we do have a, a heavy winter. And at the end of the season, if there's unused funds that were a part of this, we return them back to the general fund where they came. So it's staff's recommendation to approve this contract with Morton Salt in the total amount of $48,035.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Two is a resolution authorizing a purchase order to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for the annual wastewater treatment plant NPDES operating permit in the not exceeding amount of $17,500. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
So this is actually just the approval to pay a permit fee to the Illinois EPA for our NPDES permit. This basically sets forth the requirements of what we can discharge into our creeks and our rivers from our wastewater treatment plant and our storm sewer system. Um, again, the, the cost has been consistent in my entire career here, um, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. We typically get our invoice in June and pay it in July, so we're just bringing forth this in advance so that we have that approval prior to that invoice showing up. So it is staff's recommendation to approve.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Three is a resol- resolution authorizing approval of purchase order to Core and Main for census, water meters, annual maintenance, and a not exceeding amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second, do we have discussion?
So the census AMR system, this is basically what, uh, reads all of our water meters in our homes. We have a tower on top of our church water tower. Uh, the software that we're looking to renew our annual subscription for takes that data, converts it into a, a format that can be uploaded into our Munis ERP system so that we can send out our water bills. So it's a pretty vital component of making sure that the people are paying for their water, getting their bills out. Uh, each year, this, uh, cost is to maintain that software, maintain our, our system within, uh, the, the Core and Main is our supplier for the system. So, um, we're looking for approval of our annual invoice in the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars.
Any questions from our board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order with Charles Equipment Energy Systems for the purchase and turnkey installation of five replacement generators and transfer switches and a not exceeding amount of seven hundred eighty-eight thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Motion, the second. Joe, we have discussion on this purchase?
Yeah, so the, at the end of August of twenty twenty-two, we had one of our two twin, uh, generators fail at our wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we went forward and approved the purchase of replacing those two generators. The original date of those generators was in nineteen seventy-nine. It started to get us to look at the rest of our generator purchases. Uh, we have a number of generators that are all approaching fifty-some years old. Um, so we, over the last nine months, have, um, met with multiple vendors to dial in kind of a scope and to provide replacement generators at six other locations throughout town. These would be Park Lift Station, York Road Lift Station, Brentwood Lift Station, North Plant Lift Station, our Foster Pump House, as well as Public Works. So these are all over thirty-year-old generators that we have in, in place right now. The scoping process really consisted of trying to right-size these generators for the facility, um, looking at the, uh, evaluating of brands and fuel sources as well as evaluating lead time and prices. Uh, we formally requested proposals from three different vendors that we felt suitable to provide us with the quality generators at our facilities in the shortest amount of lead time. Uh, Charles Equipment did provide us with the lowest proposal for those six sites in the amount of eight hundred eighty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars. Now, that, that cost was a little bit over what we had budgeted and what we were anticipating. So after we received those proposals, we went and did some value engineering with Charles, uh, Equipment, came up with a plan to try to eliminate one of those generators by combining two sites that were close together, the park or the North Plant Lift Station as well as the Foster Pump House. So we were able to eliminate a lift station, reduce our costs down, um, to seven hundred eighty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars, which is before you today for approval with, uh, Charles Equipment. So it is our recommendation to approve. This would get us new generators at all of our different facilities and moving into the future.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Five is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract to Aqua Contractors Corporation of Elmhurst, Illinois for the Addison Creek Stormwater Phase Two Improvement Project and a not exceeding amount of two million four hundred ninety thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second. Being a motion, the second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so the next six items on the agenda are going to be, um, talking about our next three capital improvement program, projects. Uh, the first one tonight is our Addison Creek Storm Sewer Phase Two Project. Uh, this project continues our efforts from twenty twenty-two where we put large storm sewer pipe running from the middle of town that ended up at the backside in an alley behind Bridgeway. Phase two takes it from that point, uh, takes it out to Sunrise Park, then goes south down Sunrise Park, down Marion, and gets it to Jefferson. So that's phase two of an ultimate phase three, three-phase project. So this is the second phase. Um, it will be installing large storm sewer. I mean, we're talking sixty-six inch diameter storm sewer pipe down uh, from those, from the back of Bridgeway down to Jefferson. Um, phase three is anticipated to be constructed probably in twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven. That'll be a joint program with, uh, DuPage County Stormwater. So we're looking to combine with them, uh, to get our final pipe into our Redmond facility. Uh, bids for construction were opened on June fourth. We had ten contractors submit bids for this project. Aqua Contractors submitted the lowest bid in the amount of two thousand, or two million four hundred ninety thousand dollars. Uh, we did receive a five hundred thousand dollar ARPA grant through DuPage County Stormwater to help with the funding on this. The rest of it will come from our stormwater fund. So it is our recommendation to approve this contract and get it underway.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Six is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction engineering service agreement for the Addison Creek Storm Sewer Phase Two Improvement Project to Thomas Engineering Group LLC of Oakbrook, Illinois, and a not exceeding amount of two hundred eighty thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second. Being a motion, the second, do we have discussion?
So the second part of the Addison Creek Storm Sewer Project is entering into a contract for construction engineering oversight. Uh, staff selected Thomas Engineering from our shortlist of, of resident engineers, uh, for this task. They were the engineer on the phase one project. Um, back in twenty twenty-two, they're familiar with the site and the paperwork that's required for some of the grant funding that we have. Uh, Matt Champagne will again be our field engineer for this project, so he'll be able to continue where he left off on that project. Uh, after scoping and fee negotiations with Thomas, uh, they submitted a final proposal in the amount of two hundred eighty thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars, which we feel is, is appropriate for the size of the project, and it's our recommendation to approve.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Seven is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract for the Sesame Street Reconstruction SSA Project to A-LAMP Concrete Contractors of Schaumburg, Illinois, and not to exceed the amount of two million four hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars twenty-five cents. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so this is the second project tonight, Sesame Street Reconstruction. We've talked a little bit about that earlier. Um, the scope of the project's going to consist of an entirely new concrete roadway with new subbase, new curbs, new aprons, the addition of sidewalks to meet our village's complete streets program, uh, replacement and upsizing of some water main to a twelve-inch ductile iron water main. We're going to be lining all of our sanitary sewers along this street as well as providing new black aluminum street light poles, LED fixtures, and landscape restoration. Uh, the village has pledged to support the project with a financial contribution from our Rebuild Illinois Funds of one point two oh nine million dollars. The remainder of the project will be borne by the SSA and the bonds that we'll go out for. Uh, bids were open on April eighteenth. A-LAMP did submit the lowest, uh, bid in the amount of two million four hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars. Uh, we have worked with A-LAMP before in the past, hasn't worked with them for a while, but we understand that they are improving some of their work, and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution approved. Eight is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction engineering services agreement for the Sesame Street Reconstruction SSA Project to Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated of Itasca, Illinois, and a not exceeding amount of two hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred fifteen dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second, do we have discussion?
So for the construction engineering on this one, we selected Civil Tech from our shortlist, uh, to oversee the project. They have been doing most of the oversight of our large industrial projects for the last three, four years. Uh, Dave Boukai will be the field engineer on this project. He is currently finishing up the Easter, or the Eastview, uh, widening, uh, project for us. Uh, after scoping and negotiating fees, Civil Tech submitted a final proposal in the amount of two hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred fifteen dollars, and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Nine is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract to Chicagoland Paving Contractors Incorporated of Lake Zurich, Illinois, for the Village Hall Parking Lot Reconstruction Project and a not exceeding amount of seven hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred fifteen dollars sixty-four cents. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second, do we have discussion?
So our last construction project tonight is going to be the Village Hall Parking Lot Reconstruction Project. This proposed improvement will move the parking lot slightly to the west to allow for some wider sidewalks along the area to accommodate some permanent metal canopy structures. Uh, we use this area for music in the park each year, and we rent tents to put up every year. We're going to put up some actual permanent pavilion structures at that same location to hopefully make that a little bit more useful, uh, light it a little, lit, light it, lit a little better, uh, provide some, uh, electrical components right to the canopies themselves, so we won't have a lot of extension cords laying around, make it a better place for it. We're also going to be doing some enhancements along Jerking Way, putting up some lighting, uh, for, in that location, as well as obviously the reconstruction of the parking lot. Um, so we, uh, will be adding some, uh, islands and things of that nature that are required by our code, uh, some trees, some greenery, things of that nature. So it will be a big project for us this, uh, this summer. It's the reason why we moved music in the park across the, the tracks this year. Um, we did open bids on June fourth. Uh, Chicagoland Paving submitted the lowest bid in the amount of seven hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred fifteen dollars. Uh, staff does recommend approval to get this project started too.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Ten is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction engineering services agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated for the Village Hall Parking Lot Reconstruction Project and a not exceeding amount of seventy, seventy-three thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second, do we have discussion?
So again, for construction oversight, we selected Civil Tech from our shortlist. Uh, Dave Boukai will again serve as the resident engineer on this job as well. We were able to capitalize on some economies of scale because they'll be in town doing two projects. They can split the time, and we don't have to spend a lot of money bringing another contractor on board to do that. Um, we did negotiate, uh, the fee with Civil Tech, uh, got it down to seventy-three thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars, and staff does recommend approval.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Eleven is a resolution authorizing the execution of a change order number two with Thomas Interiors for the purchase of furniture associated with the Senior Center Project and a not exceeding amount of thirty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars for a revised total of two hundred thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second, do we have discussion?
So over the last six months, we've obviously been focusing a lot on getting the Heritage Center opened, and with our grand opening last week, which I felt went really well, um, we're able to now focus a little bit of our time on some of the things we put off just to make sure that the, the Senior Center, the Heritage Center could open up on time. Uh, that being some of the, uh, other projects that are up on the second floor and first floor that were part of that project but not associated with the Heritage Center. Uh, it's going to include two conference room tables and a credenza, uh, purchasing through Thomas Interiors that we purchased all of our Senior Center furniture through previously. Um, our original contract, uh, back in twenty twenty-three was for a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Uh, we did do a resolution by village manager back in April of this year. That accounted for some of the delays in the contract due to the original contractor going out of business. We had a couple of different, um, uh, delivery dates which increased the freight, um, and also some storage because of the delays. Those were all paid for by the surety as part of our settlement. So now we're just looking to do our final purchase from them to purchase these last three pieces of equipment, of furniture, so that we can finish off our project here. Cost of that, uh, equipment is thirty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. So, uh, technically, this is change order number two. It'll bring our final cost up to two hundred thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars. Staff does recommend approval.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Twelve is a resolution authorizing the execution of phase one design engineering services agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated of Itasca, Illinois, for the Green Street Reconstruction and Resurfacing STP Project and a not exceeding amount of three hundred thirty-four thousand fifty dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion. You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second, do we have discussion?
So we've talked a lot of projects going on this year. This is a project that is actually a few years away. Um, the, our staff was able to secure some surface transportation project funding in the amount of two million one hundred forty thousand dollars for the Green Street Reconstruction Project. Um, so this one is going to be the reconstruction and some areas resurfacing of Green Street from York Road to Church Road. Um, it's going to include underground utilities, new water main, new sanitary sewer, um, and all the other amenities that go with our new streets. Um, we are currently looking at getting into a, entering into a design, a phase one design engineering project, uh, with Civil Tech. They have done most of the project design for the area in the downtown area, as well as our current project, Main Street and Church Road. It's currently started construction a couple of weeks ago, so we felt they were the right choice. They know the area, they know the, uh, the standards that we're looking to do, and they have a lot of experience working with surface transportation funds. So, uh, we negotiated a, a scope with them of three hundred thirty-four thousand fifty dollars, and it's our recommendation to approve that design contract with them.
Questions from our board?
Did you say when we anticipated this project to start?
Twenty twenty-six, possibly into twenty twenty-seven.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Thirteen is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Lane Christiansen Company of Aurora, Illinois for the abandonment of well number three, six, and seven, and a not exceeding amount of four hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
They're being a motion, the second, do we have discussion?
So my last item tonight is...
Sorry, Joe.
That's all right.
I mean, we're going to have a resolution where you can only do like five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so my last item tonight, my last item tonight, uh, has to do with the abandonment of three backup deep water wells that we have here in town. Since joining DuPage Water Commission in nineteen ninety-two, we've been maintaining these backup wells in case we ever lost our source of Lake Michigan water from DuPage Water Commission. Um, over that time, we've also installed a number of cross connections with our neighbors. So we do have backup water, uh, provided, actually, Lake Michigan water, not well water, provided through Elk Grove Village and through Elmhurst. Uh, as such, we still maintain these backup wells and have been for the last thirty-some years. Um, these wells have to go through some rigorous testing through EPA to make sure that the water, if we ever did turn them on, was, uh, satisfactory to get out to our residents. Um, during our last testing cycle, two of our three wells actually exceeded the total, uh, contaminant levels that are allowed.[1516.21] So EPA basically said you cannot put those wells back into service. Our third well that's currently active, over the last two cycles, have been, has been getting very close to that limit. So because we have our cross-connections, because we still feel confident we have enough water supply from our other neighbors, we are able to abandon these wells. The EPA has blessed that and has recommended that we abandon them. So we went out and asked for proposals from two firms that do 90% of the municipal well abandonments in the Chicagoland area. They submitted their proposals. Lane Christiansen Company provided the lower of the two proposals in the amount of $485,774. We did technically budget this over the next three years, but we've seen these prices go up dramatically in the last couple of years. We've looked at our funds available in our, our TIF fund and our utility fund. We feel that we can actually take this project on this year and do all three of them at the same time. So we spend about $60,000 a year in maintaining these wells.[1400.84]